Meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody coming down on this very nice day. We appreciate it very much. And so, sorry, we're getting started just a little bit late, but we'll hit the agenda. But before we do that, a couple of housekeeping items. The first is always try to put your phone on silent or so that it doesn't interrupt the meeting. And then, and then, May 1st is, we're in the neighborhood of the new soccer stadium. It'll be the first home game. I know that I have season tickets, and so that will be exciting. All right, that was probably out of order.[45.96][45.96](Laughter) But we'll get into commissioners, the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So, okay.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted, and that was sent out prior to the meeting. And now, we are on to item C, which is the approval of the April 14th, 2022 minutes. And commissioners, that was also sent out prior and posted. Is there a motion to adopt the minutes?
There's a motion.
There's a motion and a second. All right, there's a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing no other discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and the minutes are adopted. Next is the recognition of the council members. And as you all know, we just take you all by order of when we see you come into the room. And so, the first council member that I saw was Councilman Nash. You want to come on up, or want to wait?
I'll wait.
Okay, Councilman Nash, you're going to wait, no problem. Then I saw Councilmember Parker.
I'll wait as well.
Councilman Parker, you're going to wait. Okay, thank you. And then, we had Nash and Cash. I know that we had, you guys are like a duo, Nash and Cash Show. All right. Thank you, thank you, council member. Council Lady Henderson, I, sometimes I can't see behind the, come on up.
Thank you, commissioners. Councilwoman Henderson, representing District 34. I am here on items 13A and 13B, the conservation development proposal and the associated tree protection and replacement amendment. We've, I've seen you before. I'm back. I had a time of deferral to answer some of your questions. I appreciate staff's engagement on that, meeting with home builders to make sure all their questions and concerns were answered. And so, I think staff is going to have a helpful update for you today. As you know, the public hearing is closed, but I just wanted to let you know that I am here and at your disposal should you have any questions when the item comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady. We appreciate you coming down and spending a lot of time with us on this issue, but we really do appreciate it. And then, I saw Councilman Roten, you want to come on up?
He's teasing me.
Is he teasing me? Yeah, he's trying to hide back there.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. Kevin Roten, I'm here on item number 25 on your agenda. It's the Magnolia East Development. I've got somewhere I've got to be tonight, but I wanted to just let you know what my thoughts were on this. If you'll see Magnolia, pardon me, Hermitage Point was a neighborhood that was built a couple of years ago that's right there, and you're going to be building in property that was attached to that neighborhood. In the back of that neighborhood is Lakeside Estates, which has probably been there for 30 or 40 years. This 18 homes that are proposed, I'm not opposed necessarily to the proposal, it's already zoned RS 15, and it's been that way for many years. I think it's part of National Next. I don't think anyone thought there would be houses built on this. So, what's about to happen, if you approve it the way it is, is you're going to connect Hoggett Ford Road to Central Pike, which, believe me, these two neighborhoods were never contemplated for that type of a connection because there is no other connection between Central Pike and Hoggett Ford Road. So, you'd have thousands and thousands of cars from Central Pike trying to cut through those two neighborhoods over to Hoggett Ford, where there are now thousands of homes that have been constructed in the last 10 years. So, you would make it a major thoroughfare through two very small neighborhoods, and it would turn, that was never contemplated. So, my, I guess my request from the Planning Commission is that in between Lakeside Estates and the new neighborhood that there be an emergency gate. You did one for Hermitage Point from another neighborhood, so from the back of that, I think would be my request. And I've talked to a couple of the people that live in Hermitage Point, and they agreed that in between where it's Pier Side and the new neighborhood is where the emergency gate should probably be located, just to keep the number of cars that would end up, once they found out that was a cut through, you would turn it into a, it would be bad. So, the other issue, I think a lot of the neighborhoods were concerned about the ridges off of the back of that and the drainage that might come on to the Hermitage Point. Obviously, that's a metro water issue. This is already zoned. It's not coming to me. I'm just here on behalf of neighbors that have been calling me continuously for the past two months about this development and the concerns that they have. So, I have to leave tonight. I'm sure there are some folks here. Is anyone here? There you go. So, they're all here today. And so, I know they're, they're going to speak, and I just want them to know that I was here and that I understand their concerns, and I'm trying to relay them to you. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman. We appreciate that. And we'll get to the item in the normal public hearing. So, thank you, and we appreciate that. I don't think I saw any other.
Parker, did you?
Yeah, I called Parker. Yeah. I didn't see any other council members. Sometimes they, they'll hide back there. All right. So, seeing no other council members, we'll go on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Items for Referral/Withdraw, which is item E. And Lisa, are you going to take us through that process? Thank you.
The following items are for deferral or withdrawal. On page three of your agenda, item number 1, 2020Z 013TX 001, staff recommendation is to withdraw. Item number 2, 2022Z 119PR 001, staff recommendation is to withdraw. On page four of your agenda, item number 3A, 2022CP 008001, North Nashville Community Plan Amendment and the Associated SP 3B, 2020SP 013001, Second and Van Buren. Staff recommendation is to defer both items to the May 12th Planning Commission meeting. And I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from both items. Item number 4, 2007SP 048001, Zion Hill Amendment. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 26th Planning Commission meeting. Item number 5, 2021SP 081001, Oliveri Mixed Use. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 12th Planning Commission meeting. Item number 6, 2022SP 021001, Burke-Hamstead. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 12th Planning Commission meeting. On page five of your agenda, item number 7, 2022SP 023001, Autumn Glen. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 12th Planning Commission meeting. Item number 8, 2022SP 034001, The Pike at Highland Heights. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 12th Planning Commission meeting. Items 9A and 9B, 2022HLI 001001, 518 Russell Street Historic Interior Overlay and 2022NL 001001, Tulip Street Church Neighborhood Landmark. Staff recommendation is to defer both items to the June 9th Planning Commission meeting, which is an update from your agenda. Staff, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from both items. Item number 10, 2021Z 114PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 26th Planning Commission meeting. On page six of the agenda, item number 11, 2020Z, 2022Z 003PR 001. Staff recommendation is to defer indefinitely. On page seven of your agenda, item number 17, 2022SP 026001, 4046 and 4060, Murfreesboro Pike. Staff recommendation is to defer to the May 12th Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Lisa, commissioners, and everyone in the audience. You've heard the Items for Referral/Withdraw. So, make sure, Lisa, I get these right. These are the items. They are items number 1, 2, 3A, 3B, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9A, 9B, 10, 11, and 17. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, commissioners, you've heard the Items for Referral/Withdraw. Is there a motion?
Mm-hmm.
There's a motion. Is there a second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and those items are deferred or withdrawn. We are now on to the consent agenda, which is, Lisa will take these all as well, take us through these items, and these will, when we vote on this, they'll be approved. So, Lisa?
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. I'm going to read through the case numbers and the case name for the following items on tentative consent. I will ask if there's anyone here in opposition to those items. If so, please raise your hand. If there are persons in opposition, then the item will be presented on the agenda. Starting on page six, item number 12, 2022Z 002TX 001, a text amendment related to daycare homes. Is there anyone here in opposition to item number 12? 12 will be on consent. Item number 14, 2022Z 006TX 001, a text amendment related to commercial amusement. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 14? 14 will stay on consent. Item number 15, 2022SP 019001, Meridian Court. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 15? 15 will be presented. Item number 16, 2022SP 022001, 152623rd Avenue North. Is there anyone in opposition to item number 16? 16 will be on consent. Item number 18A and B, 2022HL 003001, Mount View Road Historic Landmark and the Associated Neighborhood Landmark. Is there anyone here in opposition to 18A or B? Those items will be on consent. Item number 19, on page eight of your agenda, 2022Z 005PR 001, rezoning on Cliff Drive. Is there anyone in opposition to 19? 19 will be on consent. Item 20, 2022Z 030PR 001, rezoning on Winford Avenue. Is there anyone in opposition to item 20? 20 will be on consent. Item 21, 2022Z 045PR 001, a rezoning on Lucille. Is there anyone in opposition to item 21? 21 will be on consent. Item 22, 2022Z 046PR 001, a rezoning on Tusculum Road. Is there anyone in opposition to item 22? 22 will be on consent. Item 23, 2022Z 049PR 001, rezoning on Cockrell Street. Is there anyone in opposition to 23? 23 will be on consent. Item 24, 2022S 068001, Thomas Harding's First Subdivision. Is there anyone in opposition to item 24? 24 will be on consent. Item 25, 2022S 076001, Magnolia East. Is there anyone in opposition to item 25? 25 will be presented. Item 26, CIB FY 202223, the capital improvements budget. Is there anyone in opposition to item 26? 26 will be on consent. Chair, I'm going to read through the captions now. The following items are on the consent agenda. On page six of your agenda, item number 12, 2022Z 002TX 001, it's a request to amend various sections of the zoning code related to daycare home use. Staff recommendation is to approve with a substitute. Item number 14, 2022Z 006TX 001, it's a request to amend the zoning code related to commercial amusement outside. Staff, staff recommendation is to approve. On page seven of your agenda, item number 16, 2022SP 022001, 152623rd Avenue North, it's a request to rezone from RS 5 to SP for property located on 15, on 23rd Avenue North to permit one attached two-family residential unit. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item 18A, 2022HL 003001, Mount View Road Historic Landmark. It's a request to apply historic landmark overlay for property located on Mount View Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. The associated case, 18B, 2022NL 002001, it's a request to apply neighborhood landmark overlay for property located on Mount View Road. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page eight of your agenda, item number 19, 2022Z 005PR 001, it's a request to rezone from R 8 to RM 9ANS for property located on Cliff Drive. Staff recommendation is to approve, and I would like to note that Commissioner Blackshear is recusing herself from that item. Item number 20, 2022Z 030PR 001, it's a request to rezone from IWD to MULANS for property located on Winford Avenue and Longview Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 21, 2022Z 045PR 001, it's a request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6A for property located on Lucille Street. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item number 22, 2022Z 046PR 001, it's a request to rezone from AR 2A to RS 10 for property located on Tusculum Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 23, 2022Z 049PR 001, it's a request to rezone from RS 5 to R 6 for property located on Cockrell Street. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 24, 2022S 068001, Thomas Harding's First Subdivision. It's a request for final plat approval to create three lots on property located on Phillips Street. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. On page nine of your agenda, item number 26, CIB FY 202223, the capital improvements budget. Staff recommendation is to approve with amendments. Under Other Business, item number 27, certification of bonus height for 824th Avenue North, and item number 31, to accept the director's report. I'm sorry, and I have a slightly outdated agenda. I'm just realizing. 27 is certification of bonus height for 824th Avenue North. 28 should be a new employee contract for Jafar Ware, and then 32 should be to accept the director's report.
Lisa, will you repeat the items 27, 28, and 32?
Yes. 27 is certification of bonus height for 824th Avenue North. 28 is a new employee contract for Jafar Ware, and 32 is to accept the director's report.
Okay, thank you. And commissioners, item, on item number 26, I want to point out that the, there are some amendments to it, and those are passed out to everybody. And Lisa, maybe just say what those amendments are real quick.
Certainly. It's to follow, to add the following item, projects to the CIB. Item number one, related to new and replacement head start facilities. Item number two, initial planning and design for new Midtown Fire Hall. And item number three, Broadway Bridge enhancements, improvements to the Broadway Bridge in coordination with TDOT Bridge Replacement.
Thank you. We, can we talk to you for a second? Come over here.
Yes.
asking questions when they're, and they're not, and they can't be here. So, I think on this particular issue, we had a request, so Lisa will explain what's going on. Sorry, I apologize.
Certainly. For consent agenda items, we will, we will not be voting on item number 26 at this time. It is still planned to be for consent, but we will hold that till the end of the meeting, and we will vote on the other items for consent. And so, if you want to
So, commissioners-
Go through the list and just leave that one out, then we won't be voting on item 26 at this time.
Yeah, there was a question on, so, a big part of the budget process is the capital improvements budget. There was a question from a council member, and so, we want to get that cleared up. And so, we're, if it's okay with the commissioners, without objection, we'll put the, and vice chair, without objection, we'll put this at the end of the calendar. We'll consider it at the end of the calendar. Hopefully, we'll go back on consent. But we always, if somebody has a question, it is our practice of this body to make sure that we have all questions answered and clarified. So, I feel confident that we can do that.
And then, we just-
And then, we put it back on the consent. Yes, yeah, that would be the plan. And if not, then we can hear it, just like we normally would hear any item that we would hear. So, without objection, we'll, we'll put item number 26, it's still on, on the agenda without, it's not on the consent. So, with that said, here are the following items that are on the consent agenda to be considered. And those are, and Lisa, make sure I get these correct. So, those are items number 12, 14, 16, 18A, 18B, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 26, 27-
Not 26.
Oh, I'm violating my own, my own statement. Here, I have it circled. All right. So, items 24, item 27, item 28, and item 32. Is that correct?
Yes.
Not item 26. Okay. Commissioners, you've heard the items to be approved on the consent agenda. Alex, are we, are we okay? We're checking with legal counsel. Okay, we're good. All right. Alex is our legal counsel, making sure we do everything correctly. All right. So, is there a motion to pass the consent agenda? And there's a motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no. Ayes have it, and those items are adopted on the consent agenda. And so, the items that we will be hearing are items 15, 25, and hopefully not 26, but it's on there right now to be heard. And we'll-
13A and B.
And 13-
13.
A, hold on.
Diana.
Diana.
Bob, Lisa, Lisa, before you scoot out, for, oh, okay. For items 13A and B, the public hearing is closed, but we just want to update the commission, and those are not deferred or on consent. Okay.
Yeah, we still have to vote on, but we'll not have the public hearing.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Diana.
I'm not on yet. There we go. Okay. So, first up is 13A and 13B. And is there, Lisa, are you going to cover an update on 13A and B? Or will we, okay.
Molly, yes.
Molly's going to. Perfect. Go ahead, Molly. I didn't know. All right.
Good afternoon. Molly Pike with the Planning Department. Your first item up is item 13A, Based on stakeholder feedback, staff refined this code amendment after it was filed at council. So, we have a second substitute, and we have made three changes in that substitute. And also, there are minor corrections related to uniformity of terminology in the second substitute. This proposal came before you at your meeting on March 24th. The public hearing was held and closed. During that meeting, the commission asked three things of staff. First, the commission asked staff to continue work on a zoning code text amendment that would allow for flexibility of lot size reduction on unconstrained sites, and to bring to the commission a timeline for the preparation and approval of such an amendment. When we looked at this, allowing time for the analysis and stakeholder input and the drafting of the amendment, staff anticipates bringing a proposal to the commission at their July meeting. With this schedule in mind, this new development standard for unconstrained sites would be in the approval process by the proposed effective date for the Conservation Development Amendment, which is the second request that the commission had, was for us to recommend an effective date. And we are recommending September 14th, 2022, as the effective date for this Conservation Development proposal. The proposed standards would apply to those applications filed for the September 14th filing deadline and those after, filed after that deadline. Any cases already under review prior to this date would be reviewed under the current regulations that are in place. The third thing that commissioners asked was to see example sites showing the effect of the application of this proposal on the development of a residential subdivision. And so, we have a couple of comparison examples for you, and all of these are on an RS 10 property, and they have various amounts, varying amounts of natural area on these different properties. This first example is a 12-acre site, and it shows, as you see, 10% natural area. And we're making the assumption in this layout that 10% of the developed portion of the site would be required for stormwater. With the layout on the left, this is the cluster layout. Lot size has been reduced from 10,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet. And as you see, we have 47 lots are shown on this layout, and that is actually the maximum lot yield. On the right, we have the conservation layout. 10% natural area is required to be preserved, and again, we have 10% of the site in, in stormwater. So, with this layout, with the 10% natural area, you have a 10% reduction in lot size. And so, these lots, we have 34 lots. And in this particular layout, the interior lots are 9,000 square feet due to the lot size reduction, but the exterior perimeter lots are 10,000 square feet. And the reason for this is that they are at the standard for the base zoning district, and by doing that, they do not have to have a buffer. And in doing the layout, the designer realized by doing away with the buffer and increasing the lot size, they were actually able to get a couple more lots in there. So, which I found rather interesting. So, with this next example, we're looking at a site that has 40% natural area. So, again, we are making the assumption that 10% of the developed portion of the site will be used for stormwater. And so, the natural area that we have on this site, there's a couple of different things, lots of things actually going on in the site. We have some slopes of 10 to 25%. We have an area of slopes of 25% and greater. We have a stream, we have a buffer, we have floodway, we have floodplain, we have it all. So, on this constrained site, if we look at the cluster option, which would be the layout to the left, if we look at the cluster option, the lots have been reduced from 10,000 square feet down to 5,000 square feet. And in this layout, 46 lots can be developed. With the Conservation Development Proposal, there's flexibility in design built into this standard. So, with the middle layout, we're showing a conservation development that is preserving all 40% of the natural area. And so- that is preserving all 40% of the natural area. And so in this example, because of the 40% preservation, we have 6,000 square foot lots, and we have achieved 31 lots. With the layout to the right, this is also a conservation development layout. But in this layout, we have chosen to only preserve 20% of the natural area, which is, again, built into the, the standard. So this shows 20% preservation of natural areas. And with that preservation, you can go down to 8,000 square foot lots. And with this layout, we also have 31 lots, which is kind of, I don't think it's something that would happen very often. But on these particular two conservation layouts, we show 31 lots. And we know that each site is unique, and the constraints are different. And this proposal before you attempts to account for the variables by allowing design flexibility with the sliding scale of preservation and lot size. With this example, we have a 21-acre, again RS10 parcel. And this was a, something that was submitted previously to the planning commission. This shows on the left, a cluster lot development that had a maximum lot yield of 79 lots. And they were actually able to achieve 68 lots. And these are, again, from 10,000 square feet, they have gone down to 5,000 square feet in size. And just a reminder, with the cluster lot option, a development is required to have 15% open space. And this layout actually shows 29% open space. With the conservation layout on the right, we see there is actually, on the site, there is 16% natural area. And so the maximum yield for the conservation is 74 lots. This particular layout shows 54 lots have been achieved. And due to the 16% natural area preservation, the lots can go down in size. It's 84,000 square feet. So this layout has the 16% open space provided. And the difference in the amount of open space, well, actually, the open space in both of these layouts is the same. And you'll notice that the layouts haven't changed. It's actually just the lots. And what we're calling the 16% natural area is, is actually included in the open space of the cluster lot. They were not able to develop that portion of the property. But I do want you to remember that if a site does not meet the minimum size requirement or any other standard of the cluster lot option, or the proposed conservation development standard, they do still have the option to have a, develop a conventional subdivision or to rezone the property. In summary, the purpose of this proposal is to preserve natural area. This amendment provides incentives to reduce the disturbance of the areas that define this region. And by linking the flexibility of lot size directly to the amount and quality of the natural area open space provided, it ensures a balance between flexibility and protection. These standards are intended to guide development on parcels with environmentally sensitive areas by encouraging these decisions to be based on the characteristics of the land in a very site-specific way. Staff recommends approval of the conservation development proposal with the second substitute. As a companion to the conservation development proposal is item 13B, conservation development tree amendment. The bulk of this proposal is content neutral. It is just a relocation of existing text to a new section, 172865 Trees. And this is located in the environmental standard chapter of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of these items as described. And just as a reminder, you will need to vote separately on the, each of these items. And now we are happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. And for my, so we've already done the public hearing on this. Appreciate the presentation. And as I recall, Commissioner Henley, you had a couple of questions. And so, I mean, out of respect, I think we should start with you. And then, and so we're in the discussion part of, so go ahead.
I don't know if the mic's hot. All right, it is. Well, first, I'd like to thank Council Member Henderson and then the staff for allotting the time and then taking and utilizing that time. I personally feel a lot more comfortable with what I've seen. I think it's a lot clearer. I think some examples of how that will be implemented is very helpful, just from, from the walkthrough that was done today. And then having a date was just kind of the, the comments I had. I fumbled through that at our, at the previous meeting when this was up here. So I, I mean, my comments and the questions I had have all been met based on the presentation. So thank you.
Excellent, Commissioner. Commissioner Haynes?
I'm good.
Vice Chair?
Thank you so much.
I think I'm good. I had one clarifying question. So, so can each lot have a portion of the undevelopable, like the lots that had, I saw one, in one of the examples, like the lots overlapped with the floodplain?
So, the way that the sentences are written is that you have to have 10%, a minimum of 10% natural area. If you have only 10%, you set aside all of that 10%. If you have 20%, you set that aside. If you have more than 20%, you only have to set aside 20%. Property that's in floodplain is not necessarily undevelopable. There is just, there are just different standards. And so it could be possible that if you had 40% open space and you only choose to preserve 20% of it, that some of the lots may have floodplain located within them. They would just then have to meet the standards of the flood, of the stormwater management, and would likely be determined to be critical lots. And so they'd just get a bit of a touch more review when they come in for a permit. But it would be possible to have some of those areas. So essentially, we require that you set aside 20%, we don't require that you set aside all of it. But the more of it that you set aside, the more flexibility you get in regards to your lot sizes. So if you have 40%, and you set aside 40%, then you can adjust your lots 40%. If you have 40%, you set aside 20%. You're only going to get to adjust your lots 20%. And so the amount that you set aside is directly tied to how much you can adjust your lots.
Yeah, I think, I think the examples really helped and, and look good. Make, make me feel much better about it. And I also like the statement in the staff report that this is not going to cure all of our issues. But this is a tool, another tool. So I feel good about moving forward.
All right. Commissioner Black's here.
I appreciate the staff's work on this. I did view the video from the, or the public hearing from the previous presentation. And I appreciated the comments from the council lady then, and then obviously, the, the, the folks who were in attendance who spoke on it. And then, of course, the commissioners' discussion. So I thought this was really helpful, and I'm comfortable with approving it.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I think basically, the update is kind of clear up the language and so forth. And I think a basic regulation is, remains the same. So I am very, very comfortable with this proposed regulation. However, I just want to address some misconception coming from density analysis, it was, on the public comment. And somebody commented such as T2 area, actually, under this new guideline, somebody said density will increase. But it's not the case. I think for, because we already established maximum density under setting aside 20% and then divide by 80% with base zoning. So just want to make sure there's such a misconception. So maybe staff want to explain, or should I?
So the way that lot yield is calculated remained. And so I think that some of the assumptions about the amount that a lot could be decreased, they were, was taking sort of the development footprint and saying, well, you could decrease lots by this much, and this is how many lots you could fit in there. But it wasn't taking into account that you still have that limit because of lot yield.
So in that example, because of the lot size based on the preservation of the percentage, a lot size reduced from, for example, 20,000 square foot to 12,800. So therefore, divide by remaining lot, it would be like a 12,800. So actual maximum is 17. So misconception was it will increase to 21. Yes, number alone will increase to 21. However, we masked as a 17. So density will never increase. And also, I think there was a misconception about the pinhook, you know, development. I think in that case, it is number alone, it will produce 82 lot. And, and then based on 25%, 30%, you know, 20%, 40%, it just, lot size will reduce based on the preservation of the land. So it, actually, it's literally density neutral. Because if you save 25%, lot size will reduce, 10,000 square foot, lot size will reduce to 7,500 square foot. And then 30% preservation will reduce to 70,000 square foot. So no matter how much a lot you reduce, the size will get smaller, but yield will remain the same. So I think in that sense, it's a really thoughtful legislation. So I think we addressed Commissioner Henry's issue or concern, and then we put the September 28. So I think this proposal, we addressed what, our concern in last month. So if there is no other comment, I would like to move to approve 13A with staff recommendation and condition.
That's a proper motion. And second, any discussion? Before we vote, I just, I want to tell Council Lady Henderson, thank you. And I know that we have told you that many times, but wanted to personally say thank you for all your hard work. You've worked on a lot of complex issues, and we appreciate your help in always working with us and trying to find middle ground and being patient with us. So, and taking consideration from, from all sides of the, of the spectrum. So thank you. All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on 13A? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose no? Eyes have it. 13A is adopted. Commissioner, you want to make a motion for the 13B?
Make motion to approve 13B.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? Second? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose no? Eyes have it. And 13B is adopted. And again, thank you, council lady. We really appreciate it. All right. So that brings us to item 15.
Hi, everyone. Okay. Can you guys hear me okay? Okay, thanks. Item 15 tonight. My name is Amelia Lewis, and I will be presenting this item for the planning commission. The request is a preliminary SP to permit a multifamily development. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. And so the portion, the parcels to be rezoned are shown on the screen shaded in gray. The site is comprised of several parcels as well as portions of parcels. These, this area is located east of Dickerson Pike and north of Marie Street. Four of the parcels zoned RS5 are located at the terminus of Meridian Court. And one parcel zoned RS5 is located on the north side of Marie Street. And there are three parcels zoned commercial, which have frontage along Dickerson Pike. It would be the rear portions of these parcels that would be included in the bounds of this SP. As you can see from the surrounding zoning map, most of the parcels are zoned RS5 and have been developed with single-family uses. Whereas when we move further east along Dickerson Pike, we start to see more non-residential uses located along the corridor. So the proposed site plan is shown on the screen. The proposed plan includes a new public road that is north-south and kind of on the left side of the screen, as well as six multifamily structures for a total of 26 units across the site. The proposed public road is an extension of the Luton Street connector from an SP that was approved in 2021 to the north, which I can point out on an aerial as well, and connects through the site to ultimately connect northern block, Gatewood, down to Marie Street, which is on the southern portion of the site and on the bottom of the screen. There's also an east-west road identified as Meridian Court, which the text is kind of small, but it bisects the site east-west there. So this is, on the eastern portion of the site, is an existing cul-de-sac. So a portion of this cul-de-sac would be closed, and the roads would ultimately not connect for vehicular access. And so instead, where you can see kind of those green areas, I wonder if I can, can I mark it up?
No.
Oh, wow. Okay. So in between the white blocks, we see this pathway here. So rather than extending the road through to the site, what we would do is close that off and have it be accessible only for pedestrians and bicyclists, with the exception of emergency vehicles. So the access point would be gated. And then, in the event that there was an emergency, those bollards could be put down for additional emergency vehicular access. Buildings A and B are located further to the east and oriented to the new public Luton Street extension as well. And then internal to the site, the other four multifamily structures are located facing the new portion of Meridian Court, as well as that pedestrian connection there. The structures fronting the new Luton Street are limited to three and a half stories in height. And then, so are the next two. And then the easternmost units are limited to two and a half stories to try and step down from that intense, more intense development along the Dickerson corridor into that existing single-family neighborhood. So the policy on the site is split. So in the hatched area, we have urban corridor. And then along the cul-de-sac and down on Marie Street, we have urban neighborhood evolving. And so the analysis primarily focused on the neighborhood-evolving portions of the policy as the, the, the road really was located in that commercial policy, although it would eventually go to support more intensity along the commercial corridor as well. But looking at that neighborhood-evolving policy, what it's really intended to do is provide more residential units, increase housing choice, as well as improving connectivity in and around the area. So the site is also located within the Highland Heights supplemental policy, which provides more detailed policy guidance than kind of just the policy of neighborhood evolving. So the supplementary, supplementary plan included a building regulating plan as well as a mobility plan for the area, which is shown on the screen. So the site is outlined in red. And we kind of see the building regulating plan identified by those colors, as well as that proposed road that's shown bisecting the site. So similarly, our analysis focused on the consistency of the plan with the R4 So similarly, our analysis focused on the consistency of the plan with the R4 sub-district, which is shown in that yellow-orange there, and how the proposed plan relates to that sub-district. And the sub-district contains many of the commonalities with the urban neighborhood evolving policy, including providing residential development, increasing housing choice, as well as increasing the connectivity. In terms of unit types and building massing, the building regulating plan is shown on the screen, which supports unit types ranging from single-family homes up to, I believe, low-rise townhomes there. Given the consistency with the policies, as well as meeting many of the goals of the supplementary policy on the site, staff recommends approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you. And to commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant in the room? Come on up.
Just a little housekeeping piece on how we're going to do it. This room is kind of, it's voting at our normal Howard School Building, and so the setup is a little weird here. But if everybody would come up to this microphone over here, and then we'll do that from here. And so during the public hearing, what, how this happens is, we'll open the public hearing up, applicant gets 10 minutes. They can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. And then we'll do anyone that wants to speak in favor, and then we'll do anyone who wishes to speak in opposition. Everybody will get two minutes, and if you can state your name and address for the record before you start talking. And then after we do that portion, what we'll do is the applicant gets a two-minute rebuttal, if they have enough time left to do that. And then the council member will speak, and then we'll close the public hearing and have the discussion and vote on the item. Just wanted to clear that up, so everybody kind of, not everybody knows the process real well. So we appreciate everybody coming. And then we'll go slow. If you have questions, you can always ask us. And so we appreciate everybody coming down. So we're ready for the applicant. 10 minutes, and you can save two minutes for rebuttal. And the timer is right here, so you can see the timer.
Thank you, Chairman Atkins. I appreciate that. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Scott Morton with Smith G. Studio. I'm at 625 Taylor Street. First of all, I want to sincerely thank the staff, the community, and Councilman Parker for all the efforts they put towards this project. It's been really a great process of working with these stakeholders to come up with a plan that is consistent with the community policy, has been vetted with the community, and has had lots of input and changes along the way, ultimately providing an engaging project at high-quality architecture and a contextually appropriate at this site. We've started with multiple, over the last six months, multiple community meetings, door-to-door conversations, and worked diligently with the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association President Gordon Stacey Harmon on the details of the design plan for this project. The engagement we had with the community provided valuable input for the project, and we have responded in kind with many changes based on the feedback that we got from the community, including reducing the overall density from our initial plans presented first with the community. Adding additional parking was a concern. So we had supplemented parking within the zoning document, reduced the building heights for the buildings facing Luton Street, added additional green space within the central portions of the site. And one of the significant concerns of the community that we've worked really hard on is the, the design of the road connection to Meridian Court, or the, the non-road connection, if you will, and I will explain. Our initial plan had taken the existing Meridian Court cul-de-sac and had essentially connected us, our new north-south road, to it. We thought providing connectivity would be part of the initial desire. And when we met with the community, there was significant concern about having that access point, because there was concerns about cut-through traffic, additional traffic on the existing Meridian Court roadway, and providing, you know, a lot of cut-throughs that were not desired for the neighbors on Meridian Court. Ms. Jarman, who's here tonight, also lives there and has the similar concerns who we've talked to about maintenance of that street is going to be part of a maintenance agreement with Public Works, which was a real big concern. Turnaround design, which we've worked diligently with Public Works, and then access is provided. And so our compromise, our unique solution, and to think about how to, A, continue to provide access for the community, but B, provide important emergency access to this development, was create an urban parklet that will essentially allow limited access for fire and ambulance vehicles with a key, a keyed access, for a key bollard or a key gate, but would allow for pedestrian access to remain undisturbed, and would provide that connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists to and from, but would prevent the automotive access that was the significant concern with the community. You know, the, the site really had a rare opportunity to achieve a community policy goal of connecting this north-south road through multiple parcels, ultimately creating a new public street connection from Greenwood, I mean, excuse me, from, can't think of the name of the road, the, Gatewood, Greenwood, Gatewood, they're all so same. Gatewood to Marie Streets. And so it's, it's just a unique opportunity with the way that the parcelization came together to provide that connection in its full form. And we're, we're excited about that, and the opportunities and value it provides to the development. Furthermore, the project accomplishes a lot of the policy's goals of enhancing the community with greater missing middle housing choices and product types, includes new connectivity, high-quality public spaces and walkable environments, investment in new infrastructure. And lastly, you know, another concern with the community was, and included, is the prohibition of owner, non-owner occupied short-term rental. Will not be allowed here. The project is intended for, for sale residents in the community. And we have spent a lot of time working on a plan that takes the most consideration of the appropriate building form that's appropriate for the policy and the existing context, and meets the policy goals and objectives for the Dickerson South Quarter study. So in closing, we sincerely appreciate the support and the engagement we receive from the community and neighbors. We'll continue to work diligently with residents and Councilman Parker on any additional questions and concerns as we continue through this process. We greatly consider, appreciate your consideration and kindly request that you support Planning Commission. Happy to answer any questions, and I will love to reserve two minutes for rebuttal. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. We appreciate that, and we will save two minutes for rebuttal. And so now, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the project? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up. Same microphone, right over here. Come on up, ma'am. Welcome. Appreciate you coming down, and please state your name and address. You'll have two minutes, and you can see the, the monitor right there.
My name is Deborah Grant Jarman. I live at 128 Meridian Court. And my concern is that we have a metro school bus Monday through Friday that comes through Meridian Court every week, you know. And that seemed like it's going to be a concern of the school bus getting in and out. And also, the four houses that are up for auction or buying, I would like to see it to be a single-family home. But the buyer wants to put multiple units there. But that's really not a concern for me, for the multi-units. But I just would like to see Meridian Court kept as a dead-end street or cul-de-sac, whichever one it applies to, to keep it just like it is. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. We really appreciate it. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, two-minute rebuttal. And then the council member.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to address the concern about the turnaround. We have been in conversations with Public Works during their review process, and have committed to providing the turnaround in our design. We've accommodated the physical space and the existing right-of-way, and in the new parklet, to provide the T-turnaround that would facilitate, you know, the dead-end turnaround access for the school bus and other vehicles as well, because we know that's an important aspect of the, not requiring everybody to back out of this, this long cul-de-sac. But, and regarding the, you know, the product type, we, we do, we do understand the, you know, the request, and we worked really, really closely with the, the policy here, with the sub-districts, and really following the guidance of the building product types with the, the missing middle choices that were put into this policy, including the Plex House, which is the, the smaller footprint, as well as the smaller townhomes, and how they transition and height and scale, and really just fall in line with those sub-district recommendations. And so that was just, that's what we used as our guidance for the appropriate product. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. And thank you, commissioners, for being here this afternoon. So we have had a considerable amount of discussion. We've had meetings at our regular Highland Heights Neighborhood Association about this development. We've had specific meetings just dedicated to, you know, mostly with just Meridian Court neighbors. And, you know, I'll echo a lot of what Scott said. There was, you know, initial, the initial proposal was, you know, a little bit more intense. I think that what we've ended up here with, in terms of the intensity, the density is, is a good step down. It, it meets the goals of the Highland Heights policy. I believe the chairperson of the Highland Heights Neighborhood Association, Stacey Harmon, who y'all have probably seen up here a few thousand times, I believe he did put a, with the final version, a letter of support. So that was, that was good to see the developers working with, closely with the neighborhood group on that. You know, one of the, probably the outstanding concern that got me to be here today was from Ms. Grant about the wanting to be sure that that, you know, emergency access was not going to just down the road turn into a road, you know, that we couldn't just go in and say, you know, we're going to take the bollards down, just leave them down, and now all of a sudden, you've got through traffic coming through what used to be Meridian Court. We've been talking with staff, and we've talked with, we reviewed the staff report about that. And, you know, I'm, I'm pretty confident now that, that we've reached, you know, that, that will not be the case, that they won't be able to just go and open this up. I'll be talking with probably Lisa and some others about, you know, is there anything we need to do to, to tighten that up with the council bill, or if there's conditions that y'all can impose with regards to like, making sure that that stretch, the parklet stays as it's intended to, and, and doesn't just turn into a vehicular access. And then additionally, it's not in the drawings, so I, I was initially concerned about this as well, that, that turnaround for the bus, NDOT is going to require them to have that. And, and so I'm, I'm pretty confident they won't be able to get, you know, permitted without putting the turnaround in, to, to make sure that, that buses and other vehicles can, can safely do that. And also, just like zooming back a little bit with this, everybody here is probably familiar with the Highland Heights Small Area Study and Plan that was implemented four years ago, three or four years ago. And, you know, I get, thinking of trying to accomplish something like building this extension of Luton Street with parcel-by-parcel development is, is not a fun prospect. It's, it's a difficult prospect to imagine. The reason you're seeing this level of, I think, discussion about a 26-unit multifamily development is because we are getting this extension of Luton Street that is contemplated in the plan as being necessary for the kind of development that's coming along Dickerson here. This is sort of a tremendous, as, as it is present, there's these oddly shaped parcels along Dickerson backing up to single-family homes at different depths. So this street really comes in and sort of delineates the Dickerson from the neighborhood, and I think it's going to do a great job of that. Like, that southernmost parcel on Marie, you know, folks would call me about that, and they'd say, hey, I'm looking at, and I would say, well, I mean, you got to find a way to squeeze a road on there. So having it be part of this larger development was really the best outcome that, that we could have had for that Marie parcel, because it was, it's a large lot, but we, we hoped to have a road through it. So it would have been very difficult to develop that on its own. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if commissioners have it about this. I am in support of this in its present state, as long as I continue to have assurances to address Ms. Gant's concerns about the road remaining as it's presented in the future, you know, through a property sale, property transfer, whatever, that there is a maintenance agreement with NDOT in place that will ensure that it remains as, as presented. So I think we can get there.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate your detailed presentation. Thank you. You're good at that. Good at that. All right. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Vice Chair, you want to go first?
I don't, okay. I think this seems like a very creative project. I mean, my, my first thought when I looked at it was, why are we not connecting to Meridian Court? Because it did make sense to have that connectivity, and this is not something that we normally do in urban areas. But I think, you know, listening to the concerns raised by the neighborhood, and it seems like a very appropriate compromise. And, you know, glanced through the conditions, and it seems as though, you know, the, the proper protections are in place for this. And in terms of the issue with the school bus and emergency vehicles, it's very clear that that, you know, they won't get a permit until that's addressed. So I think this is a creative way to get much-needed housing into an area where we need more housing. So I, I support staff's recommendation.
Ms. Blackshear.
I agree with Vice Chair. I thought, although we did not, that was not part of the, the neighbors' comments, I did think that the analysis was really good when it talks about the, the various buildings and the heights, and making sure that the density makes sense as it relates to the configuration of the, of the development. And so just to pick up what the councilman said, so the turnaround is required for permitting of the development, is that right?
Yeah. So my understanding is that you have to have, for large vehicles, basically an ability for them to turn back up, rotate. And so what NDOT, I believe, will be requiring is that those bollards be placed a little bit further back on that stretch, so it would still allow cars to turn around and kind of still be able to come in and then turn around and exit back out.
To add one thing, this is the first step in what is sort of a multi-layered process of review. And so this is the preliminary site plan. We will, the next step, if approved at council, would be final site plan. And that's where we really get into those sort of technical details of what's the needed turnaround, what's the material type of the stretch that is only for emergency vehicles, what's the landscaping look like. And then there's also building permit review, and planning is involved in those as well, and individual permit review for each building. So there's sort of a master permit and then building permit. So this is very early days, and those, those technical details for the turnaround and everything are worked out with the final site plan.
Okay, that's really helpful. I mean, I see here with the Nashville NDOT recommendation, there's language in here that says, basically, you have to comply with what NDOT requires. So that makes sense. So there's a multi-layered review from NDOT. So with that, I'm fine.
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness. I really appreciate the thoughtfulness of this project, because we have approved the one SP in north. And so, connectivity from north SP and then going to a south, and then height differentiation to match up with existing neighborhood is very thoughtful. And I am, my concern, initial concern was emergency exit connectivity and school bus turnaround. And during the presentation and commitment from the developer, it's, all the issue is solved. So, I am very comfortable supporting this, and I really appreciate council member as well as the community, because Highland Heights community is a very active neighborhood, and having support from that community means a lot. So, I really appreciate everybody involved.
Commissioner Henley.
Well, again, I think the work with staff in presenting this plan is, it's great. We were able to get a street in that, in that community and add a connectivity which is needed. I'm, I'm very familiar with the Marie Street property, so I can echo what the commissioner said with people's ideas about what to do there. And I think getting something that actually benefited the entire community out of this project is great. And then, you know, as Commissioner Blackshear said, looking at the, the NDOT recommendations can address some of what my concerns were, just looking at it from a plan standpoint. And hopefully, you know, with the green space that's on Marie Street, I didn't really hear a program for that space, but I think if nothing else, the community can inherit that space and will find something, something for it. So, just excited to see something that's adding connectivity. And it sounds like the concerns of the one comment in opposition either have been or will be dealt with. So, I'm, I like the plan.
Change.
Nothing I can add, so I will move approval of staff's recommendation.
That's a proper motion. Is there a second? There is a second. Any other discussion? The one thing that I think we should maybe add, Commissioner Haynes, is that the intent is to permanently make sure that that street does not open back up. Just, that's, can we do that, Lisa, or just, that's the intent as the council member?
Yes, and the, the plan is, so the plan becomes part of the bill. The plan is adopted as part of the bill, which indicates that it's for emergency and vehicular only. But if the council member wants to work with us to get some additional language as a condition, then we can certainly do that between now and council, because it would be amendable to third.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay. All right. So, we've got a proper motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, and it's approved. So, now, we are on to, thank you, councilman, I appreciate it. We are on to item 25 for the presentation. Mr. Swiger.
This is item 25. It's for concept plan approval for Magnolia East. The site is approximately 7.8 acres in size. It's outlined in red. It's adjacent to Hermitage Point to the east. Lakeside Wood abuts the north. Hermitage Point and Lakeside Woods are zoned to RS-15, like this property and our cluster lot subdivisions. Greenwood Drive stubs to the site from the east, and Pier Side Drive stubs from the north. Both of those are planned for future connections to the site. The zoning is single-family residential. The zoning would permit a maximum of 22 units, 22 lots. Under the cluster lot option, it would permit a maximum of 19. This is the plan. It's concept plan for 18 single-family lots. Lots ranging in size from a little over 7,500 square feet to 7,600 square feet. There's approximately 2.95 acres of open space, which is possibly 37% of the site. Access provided for those stub streets from Pier Side Drive and Greenwood Drive, which both were planned. There isn't access to Hoggett Ford due to a stream. You can see the blue line that represents the stream between the cul-de-sac and Hoggett As proposed, the plan does meet all the zoning code requirements as outlined in your, in the report. While it meets all the zoning code requirements, they are requesting a variance from the side, from sidewalk requirements of Section 3-8 of the subdivision regulations. Those requirements, requirement, it requires that a sidewalk be located on both sides of a new public street. In this instance, they're asking for variance to allow for the sidewalk to be only on one side of the street, which is outlined in red. The applicant has requested the variance, and the intent of the variance is to preserve an existing vegetation that includes mature stands of trees located along the shared property line with Hermitage Point. For the commission to grant the variance, the commission must find that the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public safety, health, welfare, or injuries to other property or improvements in the neighborhood. The condition for the request is based, is unique to the property. The constraint creates a hardship, not a mere inconvenience, and the variance does not vary from the provisions of the adopted general plan or the zoning code. That's detailed in the staff report. Staff finds that all four conditions are met. In conclusion, staff recommends approval with conditions if the variance is approved, as it will be consistent with the subdivision regulations and zoning code. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And so, commissioners, we'll open this item for public hearing. And is the applicant in the room? Come on up, welcome. You have 10 minutes, and you can save two of the 10 minutes for rebuttal. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Matt Williams. I'm with Beazer Homes, so I'm here to represent the applicant. First off, I just want to thank staff. We do have a unique piece of property with a unique position, given this between a lot of existing homes with existing street stubs, already zoned RS-15. Staff has been great to work with us to make sure we provided a site plan that complies with the RS-15 zoning under the cluster lot option. We appreciate the hard work on getting the sidewalk variance, because we knew that the variance would be important to us to preserve the trees that would be important to Hermitage Point. Also, want to thank Hermitage Point and the Magnolia homeowners who attended two community meetings. We had one with Magnolia Farms and one with Hermitage Point to hear their concerns, which several things we were able to address, were able to work with them. A couple of things, we were not, but I'm sure those will be expressed to you here shortly. But, really important points to, you know, we do see, there are two existing street connections we are utilizing, because they were there from previous developments. And so, we did connect to each one of those. We, we do, we have worked with Councilman Rotten on this project to kind of ensure that we would continue with the same product from Magnolia Farms. Those who, who are familiar with Magnolia Farms, it is an SP, which we agreed to do four sides brick. This being RS-15 subdivision didn't have the same requirements, but we've committed to continue with the same product we're using at Magnolia Farms, just to further enhance the quality of construction there. And then, it will be a four-cell product. So, the goal for Beazer, since Beazer owns the property, we, we acquired this property as part of the Magnolia Farms acquisition. It just wasn't zoned with it. And so, as we're finishing out Magnolia Farms, which has been very successful, we want to finish out by not selling this property, but just building ourselves, and that way, we can control what products built. So, but that, I'll be here to answer any questions you and fellow board members may have, and reserve the rest of my time.
Thank you. And we'll reserve two minutes for your rebuttal. Thank you. All right. Anyone wishing to speak in support of the project? All right. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? All right. So, one at a time, come on up. And you have, who wants to start? Come on up. And then, state your name and address, and you can watch your timer there. We appreciate you coming down. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Kate Fields. I live at 4072 Magnolia Farms Drive. Just want to thank y'all for your service to Nashville, and I'm glad to be here. I live on the side of Magnolia Farms, so my backyard would be facing this proposed development. We have a pretty steep hill in our backyards. Two houses down from me, at 4064, there's a significant sinkhole that developed after the floods March 28th of last year. This sinkhole has not been addressed by Beazer. It's still there. I have erosion in my backyard, on both sides of my backyard, and so do my neighbors. Given this, just that this proposed development would be on the other side of our ravine where the stream is, I'm not convinced that this is not going to shift our backyards I'm also worried that the sinkhole is, is, is going to get larger. I'm worried about the erosion in our yards. And so, I'd like a new soil test. You know, I'm not an expert in this, I'm a pastor, but a soil erosion test or something to be done to ensure that this isn't going to shift our backyards and that the people who buy the lots that Beazer sells them would also have backyards that are, are not eroding. So, thank you for hearing that concern. We sincerely appreciate it. Many residents signed a petition for Magnolia Farms, so even though we don't have the HOA turned over to us, we have a lot of people who care about this, and so, thank you for allowing me to speak on their behalf.
Thank you. Next, come on up. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Katie Castellone. I live at 4100 Magnolia Farms Drive. My home does not directly back up to this property, but if I look a little bit to my right, I can see it. I submitted a letter of concern for the first hearing when this was supposed to be heard. While I fully support and second the concerns that my neighbors in Hermitage Point will bring up and that are brought up by my fellow Magnolia Farms residents in the, in the petition that was signed, I would like to speak to the context of inconsistencies and seemingly deceptive practices of Beazer. Beazer has said, and said earlier, that they always owned this land and planned to sell it, but didn't. There must be a reason that nobody else wanted to buy this land. The land was left off of the initial plan submitted and approved for Magnolia Farms, and yet now, they are trying to annex it into our HOA. It cannot be connected to the rest of the development because of the ravine. The plans for Magnolia East were shared with current residents of Magnolia Farms on April 5th, as if it was already a done deal, which seemed deceptive to me as a resident, in particular, creating a precedent for annexing properties into our HOA. Beazer is taking advantage of controlling the HOA to build on this property now, when they are in the final stage of completing the development for our neighborhood. While Beazer is adamant they are not setting precedent, they did admit, and I have this on tape, that they have done this in one other property just outside of Davidson County in a development that they built where they annexed in later. Allowing them to do so one more time adds more and more precedent to this practice. The perceived deception is important context when the committee considers that the proposed plan for Magnolia East uses the same soil study that was completed in 2017 for Magnolia Farms, which has resulted in the erosion and drainage problems that Kate mentioned previously. This is a trend for the company, as a development in Las Vegas built by Beazer is currently having the same issues, and if you Google it, you will see the news article connected to it. Allowing them to continue to build on this property without independent review or an additional soil study would allow them to continue their practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to go next? Come on up. Thanks for coming down.
Can I get a clarification first? I'm speaking on behalf of the HOA organization in Hermitage Point, so not really as an individual. Do I get more time allotted, or do I still have two minutes?
Well, generally, you get more time if you have a pre-written statement, but we, the commission is always very lenient. If you're speaking as the HOA, you know, we'll give you five minutes. Is there, is there objection, commissioners? No?
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. My name is Lori Schwers, and I live at 133 Hermitage Point Drive with my husband Craig. I'm also the Hermitage Point HOA secretary. The president was going to come and speak today, but she is down with a really bad stomach virus and not able to come. So, on behalf of myself and the Hermitage Point neighbors and HOA members, I respectfully ask that the planning commission thoughtfully consider the concerns that we have regarding the Beazer Home Concept Plan for the Reserve at Magnolia Point. Our HOA president previously submitted a letter stating our concerns and opposition of this community. We had 90% of our community, which is just 44 homes, sign saying that we objected. And we also recently had a link to an online petition on change.org that was signed by 121 residents in our neighborhood, Magnolia Farms and, and other adjoining neighborhoods. Many of us have written to Councilman Rotten to express our concerns, to request his support, which we are very thankful he was here tonight to do. That's part of our ask. And we also have had residents who've submitted emails to the commission, which are part of the public comments. The Beazer development of 18 homes will be located just in back of half of Hermitage Point Drive. Most of us who bought our properties on the street and in Magnolia Farms were told by salespeople that this property would not be developed, as it is partially on a conservation area, as well it contains a large slope on the west side. So, when Matt says that it's a very unique property, it is. It does not even connect to Magnolia Point, sorry, Magnolia Farms. They have to access it through my neighborhood or another neighborhood, as Councilman Rotten said. As a matter of fact, Matt Williams mentioned that he had indicated this piece of land had been offered to Roy Dale, who was the developer of my neighborhood in Hermitage Point, and Roy declined to buy the property. And in a conversation with our HOA president, Dale also advised Williams against developing the land. There seems to be some concerns about the suitability of this land for development. And as a community, we would just like to ask that you slow down a little bit on the approval process and gather some more answers regarding the suitability of the soil, as well as whether this property should be considered a critical lot, maybe because it does have a, a very large grade, maybe 20% or more. Our neighbors in Magnolia, as they've expressed, have already had some issues with erosion and sinkholes, so we're a little bit concerned about moving forward with more land being disturbed. Besides environmental concerns, our neighborhood has had many concerns about safety. We all bought our homes thinking we were on a quiet cul-de-sac with no through street, and we were surprised that in the Zoom conversation with Matt Williams, that we learned that Beazer's intent was to open up a stub in our neighborhood on Greenwood Drive, as well as a stub on the other side of the neighborhood at Pier Side Drive, which would make us a through street. And, you know, I think all you have to do is Google the information to see that a through street presents so many more problems. We do not want to cut through. It's, it's not just traffic safety, it's also our homeowner's safety. About 50% of our homeowners are single, single women, elderly women. We also have a lot of young families who have toddlers and babies, and most of us have dogs, and we walk through the neighborhood frequently. Opening up our street to that through traffic will also potentially decrease our property values. Realtor.com states that buyers are willing to pay 20% more for a home that's on a cul-de-sac as opposed to a through street. So, that will greatly affect us. So, based on our community's concern, the main thing we're asking is, we're asking for a three-to-six-month deferral to further investigate erosion concerns regarding the new development and the existing erosion concerns already in Magnolia Farm. We're asking for Beazer to swiftly correct erosion issues and sinkhole in backyards in Magnolia Farms Drive before disrupting any more land. We're also asking them to install a crash gate, as Commissioner Rotten mentioned, on Pier Side Drive, so that we will not have a cut through with vehicular traffic. We also had three things that were offered by Matt Williams when we had a discussion with him, and we want those things added too. One is a four-way stop at Greenwood Drive and Hermitage Point to calm traffic, because we will have an increase in traffic, even if they put the fire gate up. We, we want them to require all construction traffic to use Lakeside Drive and Pier Side Drive. Again, that was something he offered. And additionally, we want tree plantings, additional tree plantings along the border between our property and the new development. Again, that was also something that he offered. We realize you guys have a really tough, tough job, a lot of difficult decisions deciding whether to approve something, but we would, we have so many health and safety concerns, environmental issues we're concerned about. Thank you, I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. Who's next? Come on up. Welcome.
Come on down.
Come on down. No. It feels like that's...
Do you have prizes? No. Oh. Thank you to the members of the commission. My name is Ann Weber, and I live at 205 Hermitage Point Drive. My property directly abuts this proposed new development. I'm here specifically, again, to reiterate the desire for a deferral and a waiting period of about three to six months, because to see, for us to fully understand everything, we have been working as fast as we can. Our first understanding of this came about March 3rd, and in that time, we've been working quickly to try and understand... quickly to try and understand the history behind this property and the way it was presented in its original purchase of the farm and the subdivision. There's been only one meeting with Beazer, and that was after originally deferred. It was not voluntary on his part. I think he started to hear the opposition, and then they reached out to us. But the meeting was pretty much a stalemate, with often his words saying, "Things are non-negotiable." So, meeting with a development, a developer, when we're being told things are non-negotiable, did not feel like it was in good faith. We know that, as mentioned earlier, at least one professional engineer and developer had questions about the suitability of this land. So we implore you to give us time to get that independent soil and erosion test done. Additionally, the connectivity, I want to support what was said earlier, you don't need me to repeat that. A connective through street for us from Central Pike to Hoggett Ford will add all kinds of issues to us for safety, for our children, and for the wear and tear on our streets. I fully support all the other comments being made, and I thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Whitler, and I live at 204 Hermitage Point Drive. I am an original Nashvillian, if you can't tell by my accent, but anyway. Having lived in Nashville, I love it, and I want to be able to keep its specialness and protect Nashville, protect the citizens, and protect the waterways. I have witnessed the erosion and the water runoff coming from the hill I'm across the street from the back of this new development. We already have the erosion and the water issues. Many people in our neighborhood had to correct water problems on their own dime, because our builder, which is no fault of Beazer, but our builder did not correct and resolve our issues. And I am concerned about new issues coming forth from this new build, and just want to reiterate, testing the soil, see what's going on. When I first moved in in May 2020, I could see the water during a heavy rain rushing down. It took up new sod across the street from me, and it's coming from the hill, the slope on that land. So I think this should be addressed. It's not only affecting our neighborhood, it will affect the new neighborhood, and there's a neighborhood behind us called Fleetwood, and that water just runs downhill into their area too. Thank you for your time, thank you for your work.
Thank you, ma'am. Who's next? Anyone else? We'll make sure we get everybody. All right. So, thanks y'all for coming down. We're ready for a two-minute rebuttal.
Thank you for the two minutes. I'll kind of hit the high points, so I can stay within the two minutes. I do want to address the concerns of the steep slope erosion and what was referred to as a sinkhole. We are aware of a slope area at Magnolia Farms that through some heavy rains has eroded. Our warranty team is aware of it. We've had design engineers and some soil engineers look at it, recommend solutions, and our warranty team is currently going house to house, because it involves more than one house, which we need to get into it all at the same time. There's some coordination issues, that's why there's a delay, but just to assure this body that it's not a sinkhole. It is an erosion area. It's not because of the soil type, it's just because of some grading and drainage issues that were performed during construction that will be warranted and repaired by Beazer. Other thing, just the consistent, inconsistency and misrepresentation. When I say the unique location, what has been represented by Magnolia Farms sales agents as not being part and won't be disturbed with Magnolia Farms, they were sincere and true in what they said. This was carved out of anything that they had. So it was not being disturbed as part of Magnolia during the time of developing Magnolia, and so this is on the opposite side of the tree line from what our Magnolia Farm customers see. And then it being essentially mentioned to Roy Dale, which all of this body's familiar with Roy Dale, he was the design engineer for Hermitage Point at the time. We did share with him that this property was across the street. The Hermitage Point developer may be interested in it. We'd carved it off, and we didn't hear back from him, so we didn't know why. And so it just kind of stayed as an existing asset for us. Soils tests have been performed on this site, just like we would all sites. The soils are suitable for construction. And again, the reference to Magnolia issue is more of an installation error that will be remediated, not a materials issue. And then lastly, just speaking to the commitments, yes, we've agreed to the construction access, yes, we've agreed to the plannings, the four-way stop will be contingent on Metro Public Works.
Thank you, and if we have questions, we obviously will ask you to come back up. So, see, the council member spoke earlier. I just want to make sure Councilman Roten is not here. Okay, he's not here. All right. Seeing no one else wishing to speak, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Haynes, you want to go first?
Sure, I'll go first.
All right.
This project troubles me. I think it's a little premature, and I think the neighbors have a reasonable request for a deferral. Beazer already owns this land. I think there's some reliability and credibility issues that can be corrected with the neighbors. You can work through a lot of these details in a more well-developed plan with staff. So I would support a deferral. I don't know, Lisa, if three to six months is appropriate, given the timing.
No. So, we are governed by Tennessee Code Annotated as it relates to subdivisions, and Tennessee Code Annotated indicates that a planning commission must make a decision on a subdivision after it's first on the agenda, which would be today. You have 60 days. If the planning commission does not make any decision within 60 days, then it is deemed approved.
Okay. So, that would then give us an outside date for a potential deferral. So I'll listen to the rest of my fellow commissioners, but I'm supportive of a deferral.
And Lisa, just as a follow-up, what would be the latest date that we could consider it then, at that point?
Let me do some math.
Yeah, do some math. We'll come back. All right.
I mean...
Yeah, no, we're always putting you on the spot. You're awesome, but I'm just, all right.
I mean, I can usually spout some...
No, no, yeah.
I have to make sure, because this is state law.
We'll go to Commissioner Hanley, and then we'll come back. All right. Commissioner Hanley?
Yeah, so, I mean, I share the same sentiment as Commissioner Haynes, but I feel like in the rebuttal, there were some comments that it seems like there's information that's there, that just, it seems like it has maybe not been presented to the community. And so I think if there is a deferral coming, I think it would be a great opportunity for another conversation, and one that is a little bit more transparent about the information that's there and what can be shared, and maybe, you know, make it some type of educational opportunity, where the community has an opportunity to go through that plan, or I should say the report, and discuss some of those things. And I'm sure more things will come out of it, and if nothing else, greater community support as the conversation moves forward.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you. Yes. I think, speaking of the 60 days, I think it is, if only applicant does not agree to defer to 60 days, correct? If applicant voluntarily waived the 60 days timeline, we can stop, clock is not ticking.
If applicant agrees, then the time would start over. But if they do not agree, then it is 60 days from the date that it appears first on the agenda, which is tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to make that point. The reason I would like to have extra time is because during the public comment and erosion control and soil was brought up, but at the same time, applicant mentioned there is an active investigation. I would love to see what's that active investigation and why, in the first place, the erosion was occurred in the, you know, different subdivision but same area. So that's the critical information I would like to see. So if I would, in favor of deferral, and I would like to request applicant, if applicant would agree to kind of stop the clock.
Let me, I did want to address one thing. So, there are no problem soils identified on this property from our records, and then there are also very, very limited areas of what would be considered steep slopes on the very, very rare. So the area of Magnolia Farms, I think where there may have been the erosion issue, does have a different topography, and there are some slopes in that area that are not present on this property.
Appreciate the clarification. So, you know, that would be great to have those kind of, you know, detailed information, because we just heard from the applicant as well as public, so our information is rather limited. So it would be great, we don't have that kind of erosion issue in that site to a farm, so that would be, you know, more beneficial for everybody. So what I'm trying to say is, as of right now, we are a little bit missing the critical information.
Commissioner Blackshear?
Not voting on this one.
Stanning? All right.
Can I just ask?
Vice Chair, you're up.
Can I ask one question of our attorney?
That's there.
I just, because this is a concept plan, sorry. So I guess I just want to confirm, because this is a concept plan, that means that we're limited in terms of what we can, what we can, what impacts our decisions? We, I mean, we have to find a reason that it's not meeting the standards, right?
Yes, if you want to deny it, remember, we had the Hudson case...
Oh, hold on, Alex, you have to start over. Yeah, move over one, Alex. There we go. There we go. Sorry.
Okay. If you'll remember from the Hudson case, that expanded a little bit your discretion. You have to comply with the subdivision regulations, but the subdivision regulations also include a broad list of other ordinances, laws, and sources of law that you can consider, and you can base a denial decision on. Remember, at the other end of that, you can't make a generalized determination of harmoniousness. It still has to be tied to the subdivision regs and the other sources of law that feed into the subdivision regulations.
So as we're thinking about our options, we're really trying to think about something that would impact, is it health and safety issues?
I would want, you'd want to tie it directly to something, like I said, that's within that list of sources of law items. So you'd want to be able to pull something specifically and say, "This is what I'm citing to as a reason for denying it." Generalized ideas are going to be closer to harmonious, and that's more likely to be rejected by the Court of Appeals.
I think I'm just trying to figure out if we're asking for a deferral.
So it should, I mean, I think along, and Alex and I have had these conversations in the past as well, it should, it would be adopted regulations of the government, not necessarily just policies, right? So adopted regulations of the metropolitan government, but not just a policy or guidance of a board or commission. It would need to be something that's a codified adopted regulation.
I think I'm just trying to think about what the issues are that impact our review of this, and so if we're asking for a deferral of 30 to 60 days, what are the things that need to be addressed? And to me, it sounds like the concerns are health and safety concerns? Like, if that's the issue with the erosion and the suitability of the land for development?
I think it would be more, if you're talking about soils or stormwater, those are adopted standards. Stormwater has adopted, stormwater has reviewed this plan and has recommended approval. So stormwater are adopted, there are adopted standards and regulations that are outlined. I mean, from a policy, from a land use policy standpoint, this is also neighborhood evolving, and the lots are consistent with what's around it. But from adopted regulations, I mean, you do have stormwater. We could ask for additional information related to the stormwater, or the questions or concerns related to the adjacent property, which was reviewed and approved through an SP process. But it would, I think just, I think we would need more guidance than just health, safety. It would need to be something related to adopted regulations.
I mean, I just wanted to, I guess, make clear that an additional community meeting probably isn't going to change anything in this outcome right now. So we need to be clear about what we're thinking about that's really our concern. And I agree with you. I'm troubled by this case as well. I'm just trying to think about what our direction is and what we want to see happen in that 30 to 60-day deferral period. If you have any brilliant ideas, my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Haynes?
Well, I do think another neighborhood meeting is probably critical, because it seems to me there's some transparency and credibility questions, and the applicant, I think, has a chance to earn the trust of this neighborhood by having an additional meeting. Do they accomplish anything? I don't know. I do think there are concerns about erosion, and while Lisa's commented that the soils here are not a problem, I think the neighborhood deserves to see that soils report and investigate that on their own accord. And certainly stormwater, knowing the flooding we have in this part of the city, stormwater is an issue. So I do think those are a couple of things that can be fleshed out. I don't know if we need a three- to six-month deferral, and I'm not sure we need to ask the applicant for his consent to stop the clock. I think this could probably all be accomplished in 60 days, and what's the timeline?
I mean, so, so 60 days, so the timeframe per state law is 60 days from the date that it's first considered. 60 days from today is, oh, it went away.
I think it's June 27.
60 days from today is June 22nd, or, sorry, June 27th. So we have a planning commission meeting on June 23rd, but if you got to June 23rd and you wanted to, if you had additional questions, you would not be able to defer it any further. It would...
Without his permission.
Right, with, right. And so you have three meetings, you have four meetings within the 60 days, May 12th, 26th, June 9th, and June 23rd.
So I would suggest a three-meeting deferral, that then gives us an extra meeting for contingency, and ask the applicant to have an additional community meeting, to have the applicant perform any additional soil testing and share those with the neighborhood, and for the stormwater to give us a report. Those would be my three asks.
Is that in a form of a motion? So that would be the June 9th meeting, right, Lisa? The three-meeting deferral?
Sure. I will move a three-meeting deferral with all of those asks.
All right, that's a proper motion. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of a three-meeting deferral to June 9th, say aye.
Aye.
Does no, ayes have it, and it's deferred to June 9th. All right. So, that concludes everything except for item 26, and we probably need to take about a 10-minute break. Here's the issue, commissioners, you can't leave. I know it feels like you're in prison, but we're very close on quorum, so... Oh, and just Commissioner Blackshear recused herself on...
Last night.
Item 25, for the record. So commissioners, we're going to take a quick 10-minute break, and then we'll come back Well, we're going to try, Commissioner Blackshear, to be ready to go in 10 minutes, and if we go over just a little bit...
For the record.
For the record, we will try our hardest. There's a lot of pressure.
Are you going to the concert tonight?
Yeah, where are you going? Is there a hockey game?
Let's wait another 10.
Well, no, no, we're not going to wait. Well, there's a couple of questions that we're trying, clarifications on the CIB budget, so hopefully we'll be able to resolve that in 10 minutes. And also, I have to use the restroom. Too much information. Is there a motion to put it back on consent? There's a, the vice chair moves, and will get us to discussion. This will get us to discussion. And Commissioner Johnson seconds that motion, so we are on discussion of the capital improvements budget. I do want to take a personal privilege, just for a moment, and just say, Greg, Mr. Claxton, you started a really big... you started a really big project with the redistricting and completed that, and then I feel like the commission and the director, we almost feel bad giving you this next big project, but it's an annual situation that you do a lot of, and we really appreciate it. And I just want to thank you on behalf of the commission. I know the commissioners can say more too, but we do want to say thank you for all your hard work. Some commissioners were not here when we did not consider this, and it really became just kind of darts in the dark, and I feel like it's much more transparent process. We're meeting the code. We also, the charter says that the commission needs to do this, and so it's an important document. I think that it's not only an important document for us, it's an important document for council members. It's also an important document for departments to cooperate. And so I just want to say thank you. I think the process has come a long way since Jeff and I were first on the commission. I won't tell you how long Jeff's been on the commission, but it's been a good process that's improved every year, and I think that the staff has really, the team has really made that happen. So I appreciate the director and Mr. Claxton for working on this particular project. So we're in discussion, and councilman, do you want to go first?
Thank you, Chair. I've been in discussions, including with the director, a little bit today. We do have a major item, which is the potential, the question of whether to renovate or to replace Nissan Stadium, which is a major question before the city. The fact of the matter is that we don't know what that cost is going to be yet. The state is still finalizing their legislation. I'm grateful to the Governor Lee's administration, as well as to the House and the Senate for providing the funding that they did, that still needs to be considered by the council. There is legislation that I believe passed, I believe it passed yesterday, in both houses at the state with regard to the hotel motel occupancy tax, which would be a potential additional funding stream for the stadium. There are some concerns from my District 10 colleague, Zach Young, who represents the city of Goodlettsville. The city of Goodlettsville has their own hotel motel occupancy tax of 3%, which is in addition to Nashville's, to Davidson County's, so 6%. So adding an additional percent to the county would move Goodlettsville up to 10%. It's not totally unprecedented in the state, but it is a little high, and Councilmember Young has raised some concerns about that piece of it, which I think is very valid. So there's just a lot of discussion that still needs to happen, even assuming that the governor's budget, in addition to this piece, passes. But as this moves forward for the council to consider the hotel motel occupancy tax, there's just a lot of questions. It would have been my very strong preference to have had the CIB include what was the plan in October of last year, which was to do a renovation of the stadium. At that time, we had priced it at $600 million. We've repriced it, a lot of things have gone up in price, and it's a lot more than that for the renovation. It would have been my strong preference to have had that in the CIB at this moment, which it's not. And that's been something that Director Kempf and the administration and I have been kind of circling around quite a bit. Nonetheless, having said that, that is a matter that will come before the full council at some point very soon, I'm sure. It would have been easier to have had something in the CIB about that, but we will have to probably look at an amendment of the CIB once we know a little bit more about what that financing plan is. The council will consider, hopefully, all of that as one piece, which probably is more appropriate anyway. But other than that, I think the CIB is a big project. The council, Planning and Zoning Committee, as well as the Budget and Finance Committee, worked to come up with a mechanism again this year to prioritize the council's priority for projects, and I see that that's reflected in the plan again this year. So councilmembers, district councilmembers at least, were given 100 points, and in some cases, multiple councilmembers in a region, for instance, could prioritize some projects. And I'm delighted to see that that happened. We have some projects that enjoyed points from different district councilmembers that supported a project that was important to a region rather than a specific council district. So I think that shows good collaboration on a regional basis between councilmembers. So I thank Greg for his work in pricing a lot of these things, and also working with the council to incorporate that feedback from the council, in addition to the Nashville Next, the Walk Back Nashville, all the other different mechanisms that we have to prioritize projects. But aside from that, those comments, I am in support of moving this CIB forward.
Thank you, councilman. And before we see if there's any other discussion, Lisa, will you remind us and just talk about the amendments that the commissioners have? I want to make sure that these get put in. They were put in the record when we were on the consent agenda, but let's make sure that they're in the record while, Greg, you want to do this?
Let's give Greg a moment.
Yeah, he needs a moment. Mr. Claxton, will you remind us about the amendments that are added?
Of course, thank you, Chair. We have four major categories of amendments. Three are adding new projects. One is for new and replacement head start facilities. This doesn't add any additional requests, it's just a way of organizing the head start facilities that are already in there. Secondly, we would reorganize those facilities underneath this project. Third would be addition of a new midtown fire hall planning and design request for $250,000. And then fourth would be a new project for Broadway Bridge enhancements. This is a funding request for $1 million to support an ongoing TDOT bridge replacement project of the Broadway Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Claxton. And so commissioners, you've heard the amendments and you've seen the budgets. Greg's been really good about sending us the documents, and I know that all of you have reviewed those and talked to Greg about that. So is there any other discussion on putting the capital improvements budget, CIB, back on the consent agenda? Any other discussion? Vice Chair, any other discussion?
I'd like to know my opinion.
Absolutely. Commissioner Blackshear will recuse herself on the CIB. Commissioner Haynes?
Two quick questions. One-
Hold on, you're not on the mic there. There we go. You're on now.
Will we get an amendment to the CIB that comes back before this body for the proposed funding and plan on the stadium? Or will it just go to council?
Craig, go ahead. So the process every year proceeds with the Planning Commission making its recommendation. The mayor then proposes his capital improvements budget to the council, then the council adopts, at which point it may amend. At any of those stages, the document can change, can be amended, projects added or removed, without coming back to Planning Commission. It's only if it is amended outside of that cycle after June 15th that the amendment would start at the Planning Commission and then move forward again.
So having said that, I'd like to address Councilman Withers in this body, because I think if it's not going to come back before us, we have a huge responsibility with this upcoming decision. And this, you know, the desire to have a domed stadium, I'm not sure why that happens. The city owns all this land. We have, and Angie's here, we have this huge need for workforce and affordable housing. This needs to be an incredibly thoughtful decision by the council of, do we go build a $2 billion new stadium or renovate the old one? So I want to weigh that before this group, since it's not going to come back before us. This is a massively important decision. And then, secondly, thank you for the allocation to Parks for the very first time since I've been on this body. Even though we're still underfunded, Parks is getting more money, and I know Monique and her team are so excited and feel very affirmed by the council, so thank you.
May I? So this body's received several updates on the master planning work that we have been pursuing on the East Bank, and it is a coordinated effort that looks at all of the uses that we've heard from residents that they desire there, including green spaces, affordable housing, housing, the kinds of uses that would support new jobs and the like. And so there are a whole host of recommendations that will come before this body as to the proposed land uses and design standards around not only the metro and land, but also the other, the sort of the mobility network that connects this entire neighborhood. So there is going to be some very important decisions that you have an opportunity to discuss. I think with respect to the CIB, that tends to be a little more project-focused, and so I want to reassure the commission that while the CIB includes project lists, that the planning and the underlying planning work there will be an important part of the work that we pursue moving forward, and will be in many, you know, CIBs moving forward before the commission. And so I hear you and want to reassure you that the planning basis is strong and will be there.
And Commissioner Haynes, I think that's a good question. So I guess the way that I see it from, you know, what is our duty as a Planning Commission is, is not, you know, do we keep the Titans or not? That's not really our job, you know? The next piece is, we're not the appropriators either. That's the council. And so for me, I think, as our director was alluding to, is, you know, is that an appropriate use in that area? Is it, if it, in the East Bank? And so whether that's a remodeled stadium or a new stadium right beside of it, I think that land use question will come back to this body, and we will make that decision. So I think it's appropriate to discuss this, but as far as appropriating the money or the way the bonds are going to be, or how it's funded, that is a council question. But I do think, on the face, it seems like the appropriate location and the appropriate land use, whether it's a remodel or whether it's new in the parking lot beside of it, which is closer to the interstate, and freeing up some of the city's property towards the river, which is actually more valuable land. That's just the way I see it, just on its face. And so I appreciate the councilman bringing it up, and I know he's got a lot of work ahead of him, and so does the council and the state, obviously. And so that's my perspective, and so I appreciate you all listening. Any other discussion? We'll make sure we get everybody. Vice Chair?
Just one more clarifying question. I always forget this, but you're, the category A, the recommended as planned, that doesn't have any correlation between what goes into the actual mayor's proposal, right? Like, that's just saying, as money is available, these make sense as they are currently planned.
That's correct, that's correct. All of the projects move forward, you know, with the mayor's capital improvements budget, and then, once the CIB is adopted at a later step, when they are assembling a capital spending plan, you know, they kind of take a look at that with fresh eyes, noting our recommendations, noting the department priorities, that sort of thing. All of that goes in together.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and so we have a proper motion, and second, any other discussion on the CIB, the capital improvements budget? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Pose no, ayes have it, and it's put back on the consent agenda and adopted. All right, so we're on other business, historic. Commissioner Johnson? Diane, Commissioner, sorry. It's hard, I know.
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, we adopted, let me see, Mountview Historic Landmark in Anyock. I think this is kind of outside of downtown and historic zoning area, and as a historic zoning commission members, we are so excited to expand those historic landmarks all over the Nashville. So I, we as a planning, historic zoning commissioner are really excited for the recommendation, and we are so happy we as a body, this body, adopted historic landmark in that specific location. And also, we'd like to encourage developer, now we do have tax abatement tool, so if there is historic preservation-worthy project or property, there is a tool to renovate and preserve perpetually, that's the tax abatement program. So we'd love to see those applications coming into the historic zoning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. And Parks, Commissioner Haynes?
So we have some exciting planning efforts ongoing, both at Wharf Park and Fort Eglee. So there are lots of committee meetings, and we'll see updates on the Fort Eglee master plan on Tuesday at our Parks Board meeting.
Excellent. Executive Committee report, Vice Chair, other than, we have two meetings in May, so we hope to see everyone at the two meetings in May, don't we, Vice Chair? Okay. Director's report? Director?
I believe, Lisa, we will be back at the other location, where you don't have to raise your hand to use the mics, but they may go out at any time, so you have to be equally careful. Some of you may have seen announcements around Global Mall, and the council has recently recommended some investments on behalf of Metro at Global Mall, and so the planning department is going to be undertaking some additional master planning work at that site. It's a critical local and regional site, and I'm really looking forward to working on that plan. And as we get a little further down the process, I look forward to briefing all of you on what that might look like. And as always, we're going to be bringing sort of the draft concept plan to you for the East Bank. I think I've mentioned, we'll be seeing that in the next couple of months, so I look forward to your good review and feedback on that project. And I just thank you, as always, for your service to the city. The mayor gave the state of metro address several days ago, it feels like, yesterday? You know, time is a warp. But in particular, he highlighted the work of Angie Hubbard and the housing work that she's doing and some investments. And so I really feel incredibly proud of the frontiersman-type work that we're doing in the department, and we're really, I think, scaling up to address the needs of the community today, and I'm really proud of that. So thank you again for all of your service and support. We couldn't do it without you.
Thank you, Director. And that reminds me, commissioners, if you want to, I know a lot of you are passionate about housing in the city, affordable housing, and so I personally met with Angie, and I encouraged the commissioners to meet with her, and I told her that I think that each one of you is extremely passionate about our city and about this issue, and that you could offer a lot of insight and experience from all of your perspectives. So if you haven't yet, set up a meeting with Angie, and I think, because she's really getting going, and I'm excited about the work. So thank you, Director, for really leading that. Thank you. Legislative update, councilman?
Thank you, Chair. I've got legislation that I think is going to be introduced on our next council meeting, which is not Tuesday, which is Election Day, but Thursday, so we're shifting that schedule. But it will be introduced, which revises some of the planning application fees, which has been done in consultation with Deputy Director Lehman and other staff. So I look forward to moving that forward to make sure that we are capturing an appropriate amount of funding for the incredibly hard work that our staff do to process planning applications for rezonings and subdivisions and things of that nature. So I look forward to-
I have reviewed those, I've asked, let's make sure we get that to all the commissioners on the fees, Director, if you would, because I know everybody will want to review it. I think the vice chair is, no, not yet? Okay, I told them to share with you and the rest of the commission, and so you all can look at that. But I don't think that, it was a study done, I don't think any of them are, you know, way, way out there. I think they're pretty in range with what you would think. But it's good for all of you to review, because we'll have to review it. So thank you, councilman, for that update, reminded me of that. All right, so seeing no other business, is there a motion to adjourn? Or adjourn?
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again, or for more information on this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.